Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
May the ninth, twenty twenty-three. Regular County Commissioners Court meeting for Liberty County. It's about nine oh five AM. We call this meeting to order. Records show that Commissioner Korbowski, Commissioner Arthur, Commissioner Whitmire, President Commissioner Wilson is present by Zoom. And we do have business for the court today. Uh, so if you would all rise, Lee's gonna lead us in the pledge. Pledge is, and uh, you have the invocation.
Please face the American flag.
I pledge the ancient flag of the United States of America into the public for which it stands, one nation under God, in this small, religious and just.
Please face the Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, on state, under God, one entity.
If y'all would pray with me this morning. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. We thank you for for all of our opportunities in life that you give us. And Lord, we pray that all we do is to help other folks. Is it should be. And Lord, with your guidance and your grace, your wisdom, your love, you will help us to do just this. Lord, please be with all of our uh, folks in the county that are that are ill, that need a miracle, that need help. Lord, please be with all the first responders. And Lord, I mean, all of them. They they have a tremendous job. And Lord, with your with your grace, once again. Lord, please just fill them up with grace. Keep them safe. Men and women in uniform as well, Lord, the ones that are serving overseas, the ones that are serving our great nation. And Lord, please be with us as we go through the rest of this week. Lord, help us to do all we can today to do the right thing because it is right. In his most precious name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Alrighty. Well, we didn't have any notices and proclamations today. But we do have the mayor from Days at it. See, come on up here and visit with us a minute. Eric Jackson's here with us and uh, we get seen, we get seen pretty regular on occasions, but not, not regular enough.
I just want to come here. I won't take a whole lot of time. We had a same code issue that occurred last month and we needed some assistance. You know, we raised out to our judges and our commissioners and our emergency management department and uh, you guys come to our rescue. I just want to say thank you. Hopefully, we could put the same code issue behind us.
I'd love to. You know, takes teamwork. That's the main thing.
I've seen that and I appreciate it. If you ever need any uh, trains at work, uh, the tight lines, uh, these two guys right here. See those elevations for you.
There you go. Oh, yeah.
They were there on the same.
Yeah.
Uh, those guys dressed here, they're on the same. I do appreciate it. The citizens today, they're greatly appreciated.
And uh, also the TDM bunch. Yeah.
Everybody gives a round.
When they push the big button, then everybody really starts coming in and helping out. So it, Ron Walker and his group, you know, Sean Miller all the way up to them. And uh, and then, you know, Rob, our, our local, you know, county liaison officer that works with TDM. That's been a great asset that we have tied together. So it uh, you know, first whenever we found out we're gonna get a county liaison officer, I'm like, why? And then, you know, really, we've grown to the point to where it's it's necessary, you know, when it really does happen. So
And we say amen.
Yeah, we have. So one thing about it, it's uh, things happen. Emergencies happen, crisis happens. And it becomes a crisis management episode for everybody. And as long as we all understand each other's parts and just, hey, work together.
Absolutely.
Communicate and work together. That's the main thing.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Thank you. Alrighty. Alright, number, well, number six only. Agenda is declare conflicts of interest. Anyone have anything on the agenda today, uh, the conflict, potential conflict? Number twelve, number seventeen, David? Okay. Lee, you have that? Alright. Good deal. Uh, further on the move down to consent agenda. There was one correction to be made, um, on number six on payroll items. Uh, the recounters ourselves approve unused vacation, unused cop pay for Kayla. Mazzy, Mazzy. How you say that sheriff? Is it Mazzy?
Mase.
Mase. Boy, thank you. Okay. Uh, this was on the last agenda, so we don't have to approve it again. Okay. We just got added.
Your direction is item number four. Bid number nine. That should be seven thousand fourteen dollars thirty-eight. We got the PID number down twice.
Get that, Lee.
Um, are you talking about on the regular agenda?
Yeah, regular agenda.
No, we're just on consent agenda right now.
Listen, now you're going to consider it.
Okay.
Number four.
Number four. Okay. Letter, which letter?
Okay, no, I'm sorry. You're right.
Yeah, that's, you're looking at the line board, one on the regular gen. Okay. Alright, so we had strike the uh, Mase. Everything else look over, are out there? Any type of motion?
Um, I did have a question on budget amendment to constable precinct three health of the employees, person on treadmill. I've seen them called in here. And correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't that office right across the street from the sheriff department that just has a new gym facility in it?
Yes, we're not giving access to everybody.
Are you giving the constables access to that building?
I don't have access to it.
Oh.
Making a move. Not, not trying to be, you know, smart about it, but it's like everybody's wanting keys for all.
But luckily, we hear you.
We don't, we don't have keys to their office.
Yeah.
And so I know that sheriff is working on a plan and uh, for people to come use the gym, but we haven't, we don't have the waiver set in place. All that and certain access to be granted. So he is looking at that.
Yeah.
We just, Matthew's got, okay, we got a sign the waiver saying we're not having to see you.
Okay.
So, and so that's another issue. But at the end of the day, to get to that gym, you gotta come to the front doors and that, and that main door. And we haven't got that set in place yet.
Yeah, we, we hadn't figured out the system. We got the cards to get in. And some cards open up all the doors, some of them, most of the doors, some of them open one or door or so. But we haven't got that all figured out yet. But our plans are to allow the law enforcement officers of the county to come over and use the gym. We just gotta get, to figure out how to get them to, to doors to get to the gym.
Oh, let me ask you this. How about, I thought we had a workout spot over in the NX three. For DPS.
Yeah, he may have. I don't, I thought DPS.
I think DPS has one.
So they're not gonna allow Constable Three to use DPS workout room here?
I have no idea. That's, that's their building.
Yeah, we don't have a key to their facility.
Yeah, RT and LT that we have is to get into, we have access to their gate to get to the MRAP, the boats and the vehicles.
Right.
Is it possible for us to table this one item? So we can get a little bit more information on it?
Yeah, yeah, you can do that. If you pull it in table, it's uh, Leon, you got anything on that one?
No, no.
Okay. I mean, I, I might like to go out there and run on treadmill, but you know, if we can save a little money somewhere, it'd be alright. I probably need to run on the treadmill. Yeah, okay.
Making it's most of the present agenda except for item one on number three, comp for precinct three, like table that.
And strike that uh, payroll items, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. Thank you. Alright.
Were there any additions?
Alright, we got a motion in a second with the uh, notations added. Any further discussion? All favor say aye. Likewise, nay. Set location here, scared. Thank you. Alright. Move on down to regular agenda. From uh, the fire marshal's office, Matt?
Yes.
You want to come up and give us a little bit of a little insight on considering and approving the sale of fireworks for Memorial holiday beginning May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three and ending at midnight on May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three.
Yesterday, we have uh, more fireworks opportunities as far as the selling seasons. I think we have four or five now.
Yeah.
Uh, we're used to just to uh, Memorial Day season is very much like same with Lio, where the majority of the vendors are not gonna open for that weekend, but we have to give them that opportunity again for the county.
Okay.
And I think it's a pretty standard thing is no sticks and no fence.
Yes, sir. Okay. Alright, just as long as everybody knows, I mean, you can by far, we sit there open, but if they're not.
Well, that's actually correct or like.
It's, and it's their choice.
For, for Zinko to mile, we had a couple of stands in Punt Hill that opened, but that was not it.
But that's their choice.
It is their choice.
Gotcha. Okay.
Although hit the big two.
Yes, sir.
July and New Year's.
Okay.
Uh, and so we got veterans that leave a couple miles out of county that have purchased here in the past, and they generally only use those two weekends because that's when they make money.
Yes. Okay. Alright, what's court's pleasure?
Moving, we're through.
Second. Was that with the uh, sticks and fins consideration?
It's an exception of sticks.
Exceptional sticks and fins?
Yeah.
Okay. Got a motion from Greg. I believe that was Bruce that made the second. Any further discussion? All favor say aye. Likewise, nay. We're good. Thank you, Nat. Appreciate it. Uh, number two is from me. It's uh, considered approved request from the county in conjunction with local government code section three eighty-one point zeros or four, the tax property code, section seventy-four point six oh two, which authorizes the Texas contra public accounts. The Compteur's office, Glenn Hager, y'all, okay? To allocate a portion of the unclaimed capital credits received from electric co-ops back to Liberty County. And this is just every year we do this. So if we can get something back from the electric co-ops and y'all let, let Glenn know. What's court's pleasure?
Thanks, motion we approve.
Thank you. Motion from Leon, second from Greg. Any further discussion? All favor say aye. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number three. Commissioner Korbowski considered approved appointing Fred Lamond for position on the ESD number two board to replace remaining term of Peter Rusart. His term will expire December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. And I know you talked to Fred.
Yes, I have talked to Fred several times. But thank you. A great asset to the ESD number two board. We have three of members here today. Um, awaiting our decision. I'll make a recommendation.
Motion to approve. Got you. Alright. Yeah, motion from Bruce, second from Greg. Any further discussion? All favor say aye. Likewise, nay. Set motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number four from uh, line barter group, our tax attorneys. Soon approve the bids on deliquid tax properties as follows. Uh, we go ahead and say number nine, Elvis Carion Tiana. That's property ID six oh six eight nine. We're gonna put that on next court, so not this court. Don't consider that when this go around. But the others, um, one through eight, we are in consideration of.
Moving, we're through. Second.
Yeah, motion from Bruce, excuse me, from Greg. Second from Bruce. Any further discussion? All favor say aye. Likewise, nay. Set motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. And you got that in the one, please?
Very good. For guys.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Number five from sheriff. Considered approved transfer of a twenty thirteen Chevy Tahoe Liberty County Sheriff's Department to County Ford at Law Number Two for the bailiff's use.
Yes, sir. Mr. Hinch's vehicle crashed and he caused that. We had an extra one. I've got Sergeant Hedrick back there that handles the plate and he found one for the next three items also too that
Yes, sir.
says approved. Mr. Hinch should pick it up today.
Yeah.
And motion to approve.
Alright, got a motion. Um, David, second, that was Bruce.
Oh, Greg.
Greg, okay, got you. All favor say aye. Likewise, nay. Set motion carries. You don't say that yet, sheriff. Who's still got some work to roll with? Alright, uh, next one is twenty thirteen Chevy Tahoe from uh, the Sheriff's Department of Constable Precinct Four. Same scenario there, sheriff.
Yes, sir. He blew up the Fred Smith in one of his vehicles and we had this one to replace it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Motion to approve.
Got a motion from David. Second from Greg. Further discussion? All favor say aye. Likewise, nay. Set motion carries. Next one, sheriff. This, this is a donation, uh, patrol vehicle to Dayzetta Police Department. I'm sure that uh, the mayor sure he might even drive it at home for you.
We can have our MOU to sign with them. It's the same guy MOU we did when we gave in two thousand nineteen. Uh, gave them a vehicle for this, I think the water department or something that was used, but uh, this is to give the city of Days at one of those used vehicles.
Yes.
Making motion to approve, thanks, sir.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. Any further discussion? All favor say aye. Likewise, Dave. Motion carries. Thank you, sir. And sheriff, one more.
One more, sir.
We're gonna donate one to the city of Plum Grove Police Department. And uh, you'll run that one down to us as well, please.
Same thing. They've got MOU judge and they've been helping the side of the system, uh, up there on the subdivisions helping they, I think they're down to either one car or no cars. And so we got a couple of them giving them. I'm looking to approve.
Hey, motion from David, second from Greg. All favor say aye. Likewise, nay. Set motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Thank you, sheriff. I feel like we're on Oprah. We're gonna get more cars. Number nine from Mr. C. Considering approved recommendation to award bid number twenty-three thirteen asphalt overlay utilizing ARPA funds.
Okay, we received uh, bids reported in for David, Texas Patrol Group, Haiti paving and Vulcan materials. Uh, Vulcan was low bidder. Uh, we, we did an estimate on the quantities, but taking their uh, where you are, price times the estimated quantities. Uh, they were lower than five point seven, almost five point eight meters. Uh, a recommendation that you uh, awarded to Vulcan. But we went out for good last year. Vulcan wanted and uh, Commissioner Whitmire, they do a good job. And this, and this would be using ARPA funds. Uh, so we kind of follow all the grant work's requirements and everything.
And they're already included for a hand and right for stand up.
Making motion to approve Vulcan materials. Does that fall number eight to the state?
Yeah, a motion from Bruce, second from Greg to approve. Any further discussion? Leon, got anything?
No.
All favor say aye. Likewise, nay. Set motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Alright, Mr. C., you got a few more to go here.
Yeah.
Number ten, considered approved contracting for vending machines for various locations.
Okay.
This has been a long time coming.
Yeah. Thirty years this county auditor and six years of water and perjury agent. None of these have ever gone even through one of those offices. I guess whoever's in the buildings had just gotten people to bring them.
Yeah.
All contract we've ever seen was ones in the courthouse and that was years ago. I, I, I'm sure it's going year to year now, but uh, now that the sheriff's office has a new building and they're going, I've been there, it's quite good time to kind of uh, straighten this up. But, you know, we're not spending the money. We're providing space. We're finding a little electricity. We get whatever percentage we decide on. We do get that, you know, to help pay for the space and electricity. So I put on here to see if, if y'all had any preferences. If not, uh, I've got several companies that are interested. We can get quotes from them. And then I'll work with the judge's office. And we can do each, I don't, I don't think we need to do one for the whole county because you got, you know, Cleveland area and, and there's just too many machines, I think, for any of our companies here to handle. But if we just start doing it building by building, uh, and then like I said, work with them, then when we decide one, the judge decided one, we'll put the contract on the uh, agenda three ought to approve. But like I said, unless I have a preference, but like I said, it's not anything you have to bid out or anything. But we, we will get quotes from different companies.
Any discussion? And it, as long as they don't run out of peanut M and M's, we're gonna be alright. Okay? Yeah. Um.
You're good with it, right?
All we're gonna do is just go out and get some solicit, well, basically solicitations, okay?
Making motion to approve.
Alright, Dave.
Great.
I've got a motion, David, second from Leon. All favor say aye. Likewise, nay. Set motion carries. Thank you. Let's see here. We got to number eleven, consider approved solicitations for courtroom technology utilizing the ARPA funds.
Okay, this has been on the agenda, I think, last time, maybe back in August.
Yeah.
So I put it back on here since we're in a new fiscal year. Uh, and since we're using ARPA funds, we have to do it as a way grant works suggests that we do it. Uh, county clerk's office had received, I think, working with Nick, they received three quotes, three different companies. The two of them are on state, the DIR, which we've been buying off of, that's contracts they have. And then one of us on the tips, uh, purchasing co-op, which we're a member of. But some of these are called the federal fund. You can't, some quality can't use. So this has been sent to grant work for them to review, uh, see what they suggest. I put on here that we have a meeting tomorrow. So I put this on here that if we have to go out for bids, y'all prove it today, we can start that process and get it going. Uh, if we decide we can use one of those to be our, our tips, and that's the one that the court system wants, then we'll bring that to court and add to it. Put it up here. So we have the option to go either way. Preferably to go with a co-op or to, with the state because in short, dealing with the electronic stuff, the uh, banks may be probably a hundred pages, some of it's, but because
Yeah.
uh, the phone system of the jail is probably that many pages just for that. You can imagine what the court system would be.
Yeah.
They give you the motion to go out to biz if necessary. Yeah.
So we'll come back to the opening, whichever we did.
Second.
Yeah, motion from Greg, second from Bruce. Is there any, any further discussion? Leon, got anything? No. All, all favor say aye. Likewise, nay. At motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Can I make a quick comment?
Sure you can.
It, it, we, it was part of finding those vendors and getting those bits in and John McCollough in my office worked really hard. He scoured through them. He did comparison analysis. He did a really good job on those. So he deserves some credit for that.
Thank you, John. Alright. Number twelve, uh, from Departmental Inspection, Melinda. I know you're here.
Here.
There you are. Okay. It's uh, the quiet one. Considering approved the acceptance of roads in the Santa Fe section four subdivision in the county's maintenance program. These roads have been inspected and have completed their two-year warranty period. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Pretty self-explanatory.
Yes.
David, you got anything on that? You're good? Okay. Uh, we'll say the court.
Making motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg. Any further discussion? Leon, you okay with that?
I, has LJ, did LJ do the inspections, Melinda?
They were there, yes, sir.
I'm sorry?
They were there.
They were there, yes, sir.
That's it.
Alright. Okay, all favor say aye. Likewise, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number thirteen from Mr. Dennis. Our IT guru. Come on up, Nick. Consider an approved renewal of Icon software and hardware for all just the piece offices. Hardware maintenance for one year is twenty-two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and software maintenance is one year for twenty-five hundred and forty-seven dollars. I got one question that I wanted to ask you right quick. They still are not using Tyler Technologies. So they're doing net data.
Yes, so that is all the net data servers and stuff that we purchased in July of twenty nineteen. So this will be our second renewal.
Yeah.
Um, and it's all for all the JP offices. Yes, sir.
How's that working out for you? I'm just, I'm just curious. I mean, it's
Just another system to manage and backup and stuff. I mean, it, you know, it's uh, it's their personal preference. They seem to enjoy Icon and move with it.
Yeah.
You know, I have my own thoughts on, you know, utilizing, getting everybody on the same system.
Yeah.
But it is, but yeah, this unfortunately, this is something that we have to do yearly just to make sure that system.
I do have a question, Peter, because
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so the, well, the rules are changing for gas fees, and so we're gonna have to start keeping up with things like subscription renewals and kind of go back and gather them. Um, does this have another renewal besides this or are they just coming back?
No, it's just yearly for the hardware and stuff.
No, we've been doing it since two thousand and nineteen, right?
Yes, it's been the second renewal since you guys purchased that equipment before it got here.
This is the renewal.
Yes.
Yeah. I think next year we're gonna get into this a little earlier and we'll probably need to start getting all of the faces.
I agree.
What, what? What's the scary thing about moving from net data to Tyler? I just
I wouldn't say it, but you know, it's their personal preference. They they have different horse doors from different counties, you know, I don't know if it's unpaid in a bad way, but from a standpoint, it's easier to utilize it if everybody's on the same system. I like one from Android to Apple. Some people don't like, some people just like one thing, some people like the other. Uh, the system they currently use is, I mean, it does exactly what they needed to do.
Well, I, I will say this, since we moved to Tyler, but you know, when the JP's looked at it last, they didn't have a system comparable to this. They do now. They have something called defended access. People can go online, submit their NLO. You know, they take online without even having to bother the court. It's a very nice system. We're using it in my office for our limited means, but it's really geared for JP's. So hopefully they'll get to look at it. They'll think, wow, this is pretty nifty and they might be willing to, you know.
To do this next year, we need to start a couple months ahead of time, get you vaccinated.
No, they just, they're not here, but I can say one of the things I remember back then is that we really loved that there was a collections built in, there was one, and we don't think that, um, that Tyler would provide.
Now, it does, it does. It's, yeah, it's something new. Yeah.
Something since they
Yes, they have, they have. I mean, if you see what's happening in our office with the credit card machines and defendant access and the online access, it's really great and it's all geared around collections. It's I think they'll like it if they take a look at it.
Definitely something we find you could come back and have them take a look at and reevaluate. Hey, look, let's
Well. And defendant access doesn't cost anything. They collect the money through the uh, credit card. So
Okay.
It's a, it's a nice deal.
Well, Nick, I'll trust you to get the rope out and hurt them all.
Making motion to approve. Five seconds.
Motion from Bruce, same from Greg. Any further discussion? All favor say aye. Likewise, nay. Set motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you, Nick. Don't run away. I got one more coming up here shortly. Uh, for number fourteen, from uh, Ms. McCarthy. Mr. Poston over to county attorney's office, considering approved order revising rules and regulations for non-consent towing and storage services in the county of Liberty. So Catherine, you wanna elaborate or Captain Dunn's gonna come up and elaborate just a little bit for us. Come on up, Captain.
Give y'all the copy of what we have right now, hoping to upgrade it. What we're looking at. In section four of the rules and regulations. You don't have to take. I've sent you one beyond. I forgot you weren't here.
Can you email it to me, Robert?
I can. I can email it to you when I get back to Ross.
Thank you.
Uh, basically what it is in section four, it shows the uh, disqualifiers for the record driver permits. And it, yeah. It puts in there that if you've ever been convicted of a felony uh, or a misdemeanor punishable by confinement in jail or a um, a fine amount that exceeds five hundred dollars. Uh, I'd like to see if we could change that and put in there, uh, if, put a ten-year limit on the misdemeanor convictions. I mean, there's, there's record drivers within this county that got arrested for DWI in, in the eighties. I really don't think that should disqualify someone for operating a wrecker that far back. So and because it's so restricting, just one day And because it's so restricting, just one day in jail automatically disqualifies them. So I think if we put in there ten years back, then we can, anything over ten years old, we can go ahead and move past as long as it's a misdemeanor.
Right.
I'm not giving any, any leeway on the felonies. Uh, and the other thing down in uh where the hearing process is, one of the, didn't think about it when we were going through all this stuff and getting approval for it back last year. But the appeal process for any disqualifiers is uh a hearing between the patrol captain, a patrol sergeant, and the way it's set up now is a employee of a record company on the opposite end of the county where the person is filing the appeal. Well, that puts us in a bind because one of the disqualifiers is criminal histories. I can't provide criminal history to a record driver about somebody else. So if if someone is disqualified because of their criminal history and they appeal it, that is one person I can't even have in the room.
Yeah.
Because of the criminal history. So I'd like to add, take that part off, that number three and add, you know, just a a a county employee uh that is a DPS certified to view criminal history.
Okay.
And I think if we put as a county employee, we can open it up to any county employee, as long as they're DPS certified, CG certified, to be able to sit in that room. So when we presented criminal history in the hearing process, uh, we've not committed any uh CG's violations. And that's the, that's the only two uh modifications or revisions I'd like to see. Captain?
I I agree with all of that, especially um the second revision regarding um civilian Liberty County, including that is CG certified and DPS certified, you know, we including my office, you know, we have to go through those things to to view our streets and possibly the cases that we have, so um, I can see where that would put the sheriff's office in mind.
Angela, do you have any concerns?
My house bounds are changed.
Yes, sir.
Sheriff, I can remember in the sixty-fifth legislature rules for incarceration, uh, some of those guys that were caught for one marijuana cigarette got a forty-year sentence, and they did forty years. So I mean.
It wasn't too long ago we arrested a guy. He had got arrested back in the eighties for crack cocaine and got life.
Yeah.
He was on parole, but he got life for possession of crack cocaine, wasn't even, wasn't even enough to distribute, just possession.
Yeah.
I never seen anything like that.
All right. What's, what's say the court?
With his revisions, with the revisions he requested?
Got a motion from Greg, second from David. Any further discussion? Leon, you got anything?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, all favor say aye. Likewise, nays.
The revisions are again.
Thank you, Captain.
The revisions you're right.
I always notes in the revisions are.
Thank you, Captain.
Sir.
Number fifteen from Mr. Dennis. Come on back up, Nick.
Yes, sir.
Uh, considering approved Roden Bridge Bridge. Boy. It's okay, y'all. It's all right. I'm doing my own little timeout. Okay. Roden Bridge Precinct One, building yard location end date, and that's on fourteen oh nine.
There you are.
To be approved for internet access.
Yes, so when, when you got the building set up out there, there was nothing. There was no available service.
Right.
We waited, waited. Finally, we have a service out there so we can get them off the internet access on this contract. So it's going to be about one thirty a month, and I think it's three-year contract for that.
Who's supplying that?
Uh, it's going to be ACC Business. They're a reseller of AT&T. Okay, so that's how they do it.
Okay.
That's all we can find out. That's all we get. And it's going to be plenty of speed. What do you need? The uh, that Dollar General or whatever, the emergency management had a office out there. I'll let them use prior news. Along with that, maybe satellite.
You don't want to use that, do you? No.
You guys, I will.
Yeah.
Motion from uh Greg, second Leon. Any further discussion? All favor say aye. I got that motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen. Number sixteen. From Mr. Korbowski, Mr. Precinct One, considering approved in local agreement by and between Liberty County and Liberty Independent School District to cooperate mutually in maintaining streets, roads, and ditches and recreational areas, provide better service to the public, reduce expense by avoiding duplication of equipment and manpower and other resources. I'm sure they need the help and.
Oh, yes. It's the same thing. It's just a renewal that we do every year.
Yes. Got a motion from David to approve. Greg, was that a second? A second from Greg. Any further discussion? All favor say aye. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number seventeen from uh Mr. Poston, county attorney, considering approved a letter in support of consolidation of Liberty County MMD number, what's the number, Catherine? That MMD one, I believe it is one if I remember right. And Liberty County Mud number. One, thank you. Um. You want to explain this? I I understand the reasoning because you don't have double taxation. It's ridiculous.
Correct.
So if you've moved everything under one and consolidate with just an MMD, it can, it can basically do the same thing that a mud can do.
Exactly.
Expand with expansional services as well.
And and this is um set forth by law and the water code, you can call it these two entities.
Okay. Yeah, saves, well, saves the persons that live in that, that district. Honey, that's the whole point of this. Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce. Second from Greg. Is there any further discussion? Leon, you okay with this?
I'm good. I'm good with it.
Okay. All right. All in favor say aye. And that motion does carry. Uh, that was three with one of them saying, okay, got you. Uh, next one, we have an executive session. Uh, so with that being said, is motion to go in executive session?
Thank you, my motion.
Got a motion Leon, second from uh Bruce. All favor say aye. And it is now nine forty-two.
You said it better than I was going to last.
Okay, we did gavel out of uh executive session ten oh four back in regular session at ten oh five. And uh, on the uh, receiving our update from council regarding uh pending litigation in the two fifty-third. Uh. What's say the court at this time on that matter?
We authorize our attorney to continue negotiating a settlement uh on the case mentioned. Second.
All right, got a motion. From Bruce, uh, from Greg. Second from Bruce to continue negotiations with a aim toward settlement. Um, any further discussion? All favor say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Uh, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Motion to, Sheriff, why didn't they say? From Bruce, say from David, very quickly, all favor say aye. We are.
You got it first.
Thank you. Bruce got it. Yeah.